Is this your last council meeting, Sophia?
I guess my last regular council meeting. We have the 24 for the budget and the planning commission.
Let's make it a good one.
Yeah, you guys, don't screw it up. Just kidding. Let's do the people's work. Okay. I think we're all ready. Okay, perfect. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the June 16th regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. We are excited to see the state reopen and ask that we continue to support the decisions of individual businesses that may still require masking and social distancing so that we can safely reopen. If you wish to make public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. One, if you are logged into the Zoom meeting webinar, click on Raise Your Hand on the right-hand side of your screen. When it is your time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you and you will have two minutes to comment. You can also access this meeting by phone. You can call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen, and press star nine on your phone, and this will raise your hand. When it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute your phone, you will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted, and you will have two minutes to comment. So now, if you will, please join me for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Pereira?
Here.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar is absent.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda, we have ceremonial matters. We have a proclamation designating June 20th through 26, 2021, the week of the oyster. Whereas the Arcata Downtown Business Community, in order to showcase Arcata's relationship to its high-quality water resources and Arcata and Humboldt Bays, is producing Arcata Main Street's 31st Annual Arcata Bay Oyster Festival on Saturday, June 22nd, excuse me, June 26, 2021, to be held virtually and as Oyster Festival Express. Arcata Main Street founded the Plaza Watershed Program and recognizes the city of Arcata and the city of Eureka's significant efforts to improve and maintain water quality in Humboldt Bay, which supports aquaculture plant and fish populations and many recreational activities. Whereas this year, the entire community, young and old, families and singles, are invited to livestream this online event featuring live music from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, June 26. Participants are encouraged to buy pre-sale oyster packages, set up viewing parties at home with tasty oysters, and virtually enjoy usable entertainment, but oyster calling and best oyster contests, children's activities, and more. There will also be a map showcasing where to find oyster specials all over Humboldt County, local beverage makers, and live music venues. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of Arcata, hereby designates June 20th through 26, 2021, as the week of the oyster and encourages all community members to enjoy the food, fun, music, and frolic at Arcata Main Street's Oyster Festival Express. Livestream this event on YouTube through Arcata Main Street's website, arcatamainstreet.com, on Saturday, June 26. I'll sign today by myself. Okay. Next, we have our annual report from the Parks and Recreation Committee, and this will be presented by our vice chair, Jane McGuire.
Hi there, and I just, sorry, I was gonna jump in there. Heather Smith, staff liaison to the committee. So, thank you, Mayor and council members. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all tonight, and we hope you had a chance to peruse the annual report as part of your agenda packet tonight, just highlighting the many programs, facilities, and other facets to the community that both the Parks and Recreation Divisions oversee. I just wanted to mention that we're proud of the programming and childcare that we were able to offer to the community during the last year and the COVID shutdown. And as divisions where both Parks and Recreation, we're looking forward to rebuilding and continuing to reopen. And then I will again introduce Jane McGuire, who's our representative here tonight from the Parks and Recreation Committee, to further present the annual report and highlight the working plan for the coming year. Thank you.
Thanks for having me. Can you all hear me okay? Perfect. So, as I was introduced, my name is Jane McGuire. I'm a committee member. I've been on this committee for a good number of years. I think this is my sixth year that I've been serving on this committee. Heather, you sent it to me and I didn't even read it. I think it's six, is that right? Heather? Did I lose you? Oh, well. Anyway, I am a professor at Humboldt State University in the Recreation Administration Program, and not only am I a professor in Recreation Administration, but I spent a career prior to becoming a professor, I'm working in the field of recreation. And so, it's a field that I am very comfortable with, very familiar with, and is truly at the heart of everything that I do. So, I'm honored to be able to serve on this committee and to support the development and movement of this committee. A little bit about our committee, we have six community members that come together. We all have very different backgrounds, and we come together all with a passion to support Parks and Recreation programming in the city of Arcata. And we meet every other month. And I want to take a second to talk really briefly. I know my meeting time is short, but I want to take a minute to talk about the importance of parks and recreation. Parks is really easy to see. It's very tangible, right? You drive past, you see the green fields, you see the playground equipment, you see the spaces. And so, parks are easy to understand. I think too often, we overlook recreation. Recreation is the programming side of the house. It's the what we offer. It's the how we connect with the people, not the space necessarily, but the programs that bring people to the space. And parks and recreation work together in a very integral way. And so, the cities, the Recreation Division, Parks and Recreation Division, their motto is creating community through people, parks, and programs. And I think that's a very fitting statement. Parks and Recreation truly do create better community by bringing people together. They have the power, Parks and Recreation Programs have the power to strengthen community, to strengthen community image, to develop a sense of place. And we know through research that when people have a sense of attachment to place, they also have an increased engagement in their community and increased stewardship of the spaces around them. A perfect example of that is Greenview Park. That's a neighborhood park that has really developed a sense of pride in our community. I want to add that it is the first fully accessible playground space north of Santa Rosa. Now, since that, since this park has been put in, other communities are developing parks, and actually, just as a sort of a sense of awareness, the city of Eureka has a, not just a proposal, but a plan in place to replace every one of their parks and make them all fully inclusive. And so, I think that sets a nice target for us. It's great to be the first, but I think we need to continue to make our spaces inclusive. Parks also create cultural unity, closing gaps, and creating opportunities for more inclusion in our communities. I want to take a second to point out the programs like the Young Athletes Program through Special Olympics that brings children with and without disabilities together to develop motor skills and develop friendships. Also, we partner with the university and the local high schools, the city of Arcata does, to host Special Olympics bocce tournaments, and we're excited to get that back on track this fall. Another example, outside of the city of Eureka, I'm sorry, outside of the city of Arcata, is McKinleyville's new teen center that was built with the premise of bringing people together to build unity and inclusiveness. And so, just using our community around us, I want to emphasize the importance of parks and recreation. Also, Parks and Recreation supports economic development, like the Oyster Festival, as was just discussed. Another little highlight I want to point out outside of Arcata is the new Skywalk in Eureka. The Skywalk in Eureka, I went the other day for the first time, it was packed. And so, they're bringing people in, it's generating revenue, it's generating excitement. And so, I think as a city, we can be thinking about opportunities like this to be able to continue to expand drawing people into the city of Arcata, for instance, like the development in Redwood Park. Parks and Recreation also keeps older adults healthier and stays, helps them stay socially connected to allow them to stay in their homes and in our communities longer, and I think that's really important as well. Another interesting side note is parks actually increase our property values and neighborhood desirability. And so, that's true across the board, and then the nicer the parks are, the more modern the parks are, the increased desirability of that neighborhood as well. And also, parks increase and develop youth, I'm sorry, foster youth development. Example of that is like the Zero to One Playgroup Program we have, which is a collaborative venture with the First Five of Humboldt and an ACE's Collaborative Partnership Grant. I want to take a moment to recognize that the Parks and Recreation staff are doing an amazing job with the very limited resources that they have. And so, much more could be done, and I know this is true for every department, so much more could be done if there was more funding, so I get that. But I just want to say that they are doing an amazing job, and they're operating on a very shoestring budget. So, on to the report. Last year, even through COVID recreation programs, we're still keeping our community coming together. We had 31 unique recreation programs take place during the year. And through those programs, there was a, we generated $167,000 in total revenue. Summer camp last year served 1,483 youth in our community. And then, with changes in the, in school and school attendance, we also offered fall camps, and that generated an additional 267 unique participation points, so unique people participating in that. The Zero to One Playgroup adjusted their offerings last year during COVID to include opportunities to participate from a distance as well as outdoor meeting spaces, and they continue to offer very high rate of services. We, last year, we saw the start of the art on the fence installation, which I think was a really lovely, a really lovely and very visible reminder of parks and recreation in our community. We also saw a MOU developed between the city of Arcata and the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association. So, those are some of our highlights. Oh, also, we celebrated the development of the footsaw court. So, that's some of the stuff that happened last year, and just a few of the things you have the report, I'm sure you can read all of those details there, but those are some of the things that, as a committee, we are particularly proud to see happen. Some of our goals for next year, we're really excited about seeing programs reopen and special events reopen in our community. Again, to continue to build that connection with people. We're looking at exploring options to increase services in the Valley West area, Redwood Park renovations, development and upgrade of the Forsyth Track, including disc golf and mountain biking trails. Increased, oh, last year, we saw the completion of the Plaza Improvement Task Force, and they, among those recommendations, was increased programming on the plaza. And so, as we start to come back together in physical space together as a community, we're looking to increase programming on the plaza. Carlson Park Development, complete the Shea Park project, increase teen programming, explore programming for adults with disabilities, and then there's several neighborhood parks that we're looking to develop. So, all, in order to do all of those things, obviously, budget, budget, budget is so important. I want to take a second to highlight the, the staffing that's, that, that, that's happening, the stat, the lack of staffing, the difficulty with staffing that we're having right now in Parks and Recreation. I'm not sure if you know, there's currently two recreation supervisors, formally two recreation supervisors in position right now, and one of those is really doing two jobs, and so, it's difficult. It's difficult to manage doing two jobs and one of those being running summer camp. We also have another one of our former rec supervisors, who is now a parks supervisor, who's really managing two jobs as well. And so, I know, I was looking at the proposed budget for next year, and I just want to stress, it's so important to, in order to do the job, we need the people to do the jobs. And so, it's a, I know it's a shameless plug, but it's an important plug. Funding is necessary to meet the needs of our community. Funding is necessary even to support partnerships and grant opportunities. And funding is necessary to carry out the mission of creating community through people, parks, and programs. So, that's the report. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Jane. Let's see, are there any questions from the council?
I have some questions. I'm looking at your comprehensive work plan for the upcoming year on packet page 30, and I was wondering if you could talk a little bit more about the additional recreation improvements to Valley West?
Um, I can talk about them in the sense that, that there's been comprehensive studies done on the area, and there's tentative plans. Heather might be in a better position as a, as a committee member. I've seen the proposed plans in development in the area, but there, it's all very tentative at this point based awaiting funding, as I understand it. But Heather, you might be able to answer that.
Sure, I mean, I think a big part of that focus is Carlson Park, and we are waiting to hear if we've been awarded a grant, which we should, with the California Prop 68, and we should be hearing on that at the end of the summer. And other grants in the wings, you know, depending on if that funding will come through. So, obviously, that funding does focus on the development of Carlson Park. And then, you know, I think over the past few years, there's definitely been talk of different options of ways that we could offer additional programming within the Valley West. A lot of that has been contingent on having a space to do so, but, you know, I think that we're seeing that it's a priority not only of the council but of the community. And so, as we rebuild, it's a time for us to sort of reevaluate what those priorities are, you know, even if it's offering something like Young Athletes or Program or other events on the basketball court. So, you know, there's a lot of options on the table, but a lot of it, we've been waiting to hear on those major grants for Carlson Park.
Thanks. And then, looking at number five, where you talk about generating additional revenue to support city parks, facilities, and recreation programs. I was just wondering, what, what were you guys exploring in addition to the residential construction tax you've listed?
So, that would come back to, like Heather was saying, the grants that we've been writing, and even the opportunity to explore future grants as well, and partnerships and collaborations. Again, there are several grants in the works, and so, like Heather was just mentioning in the Valley West area.
Okay, yeah, I guess when I was thinking of revenue, I was thinking of stuff that wasn't grants, but that sounds fine.
I count grants as revenue as well. Dollars coming in.
And then, number eight, could you give an update on Measure A?
I don't feel equipped to do that. Heather, can you give an update on Heather?
I'd be happy.
As a committee member, I don't have those details.
I'd be happy to give a quick update on Measure A. So, we have gotten all of the parcel data information together for Measure A, and that has gone to the county to do that initial assessment of the open space parks, clean water, trails ballot measure that was passed last November. So, this will be the first year that that is filled out. In your budget that you reviewed last night, there's $172,000 of anticipated revenue based on the parcel list that was supplied to the county. And of that, there is 150,000 of that, that was earmarked for the Fickle Hill Trail, the Fickle Hill Road and the, and connection into the Sunnybury Trail, as that project is the initial funded project for Measure A this year.
Great. Everything sounds good. Thanks, everybody, for all your work.
Okay. Questions from the council? Heather, did you have something you wanted to add? No, okay. We'll see no other questions from the council. I just really want to express my gratitude. Jane, you're a fantastic representative of the Parks and Recreation Committee, also one of our amazing committees that have great institutional knowledge. Thank you for bringing your expertise. And I think what you shared in your report is not only a benefit here to the council, but I think for the community to see the value of Parks and Recreation. And Heather, just grateful for the work that you've been doing to keep things afloat. And I will say, as a, as a new mom, the isolation that new mothers experience in general, having it amplified in COVID, just really appreciate the efforts to provide playgroup and meeting opportunities for, for mothers of young children. So, just want to express my gratitude on that front as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you both. Okay. Next, we are on to early oral communications. This is a 15-minute time period provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda this evening. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes, and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Do we have any public comment?
We do have public comment. Our first speaker will be, screen name Emily, and we have Kristen in line after that. Please go ahead, Emily. You have three, two minutes.
Thank you. I wonder what happened to the three-minute time limit, but I will take my two minutes. My name is Emily Mossman Smiley, and it has been four years, and there is still no justice for David Josiah Lawson. The Lawson family deserves justice, and the community is not safe until law enforcement, Arcata City staff, and city council, and the Humboldt County's DA office correct the negligence that is abundant in this case. The strong undercurrent of white supremacy in this community is the reason why Josiah Lawson's killer is not currently behind bars. It is time that the city council take it upon themselves to fix these wrongs. Join the struggle in getting Maggie Fleming out of her position, defund the police, and invest that money into social programs that the community actually needs and will benefit from, and do everything in your power to get these, this case seen again, and demand that justice is served. Now is the time for you to join the struggle. Now is the time for you to make some real change in this community for the better. If you don't, don't join the struggle, I will know on which side of white supremacy that you stand. You are either complacent with the white supremacy in our community, or you are willing to work to dismantle the white supremacy in our community.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you. Next, we have Kristen. Please go ahead, Kristen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hello, everyone. My name is Kristen Orth-Gordonier. I'm a graduate student at Humboldt State University in the Environmental Science and Management Department, where I'm working with Dr. Lori Richmond in her Human Dimensions Research Lab. I'm also a planner at Greenway Partners, working with Aldron Laird and Humboldt County Long Range Planning Staff on a feasibility study that's funded by the California Coastal Commission to look at regional coordination of sea level rise adaptation planning. As a part of my thesis research, as well as the county study, we recently sent a survey to staff and elected officials of local agencies and organizations such as the city of Arcata that could be involved in a regional sea level rise planning effort. If you received the survey, we would really, really appreciate your participation. We have had some tough technical difficulties with, with our survey platform, which is Survey Monkey, interacting with spam detectors, so we will be sending out another link tomorrow morning to people who haven't accessed the survey yet. If you started it via Survey Monkey, the Survey Monkey email, please use that original link. We did send out another reminder email on Monday. If you don't receive the survey by tomorrow morning but are interested in taking it, please contact me. My email is kmo29@humboldt.edu. And the survey will be closing on the 20th, and we greatly appreciate any time you can take to participate and are excited to hear your input. Lastly, just wanted to tell the public who may be watching this and are interested in sea level rise. The county also released a different survey for the public about sea level rise, and we'd love to hear your input, no matter where you reside. Even if you don't live right on the coast, your feedback is incredibly valuable. If you're interested in sharing your thoughts with local planners about sea level rise, you can access the survey by Googling Open Town Hall Humboldt Sea Level Rise, or on the county's Facebook page, they posted it in late March, and Local also posted it in late March. So, that is it. Thank you so much for your time and hopefully your participation in the surveys. If you have any questions, again, you can contact me at kmo29@humboldt.edu. Thank you.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you. Checking if there are any more public comment for items not on the agenda tonight. Seeing no more public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So, I'll go through and read the consent calendar. Item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of June 2, 2021. B, bi-weekly report on general warrants. C, adopt ordinance number 1546 and ordinance of the city council, the city of Arcata, amending zoning regulations pertaining to formula restaurants, waive reading of the text, and consent to read by title only. D, direct the city manager to sign the fiscal year 2021, 22 Humboldt State University Ridership Agreement. E, accept $15,000 in donations for commemorative benches in the Arcata Community Forest. F, approve sending a letter of support for reauthorization of the Federal Transportation Act to include Amtrak support for rural areas. And lastly, G, continue the fiscal year 2021, 2022, proposed master fee schedule public hearing from the initial date of June 16, 2021 to June 24, 2021. Is there any member of the council that would like to remove an item for separate discussion? Okay, seeing none. Is there any member of the public or staff that would like to request an item be removed from the consent calendar?
Item C has been requested to be removed. I don't actually think that the request to remove it is pertaining directly to the ordinance itself, but to the additional direction that the council provided at the last meeting in regards to applications that were coming in during, during the rulemaking process. But I would suggest that we pull Item C, and then I can explain that, although I know you've all received many emails as well.
Okay.
We also have a member of the public.
I think that's for Item C, yeah.
Just double checking.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Do we have a motion on the consent calendar minus Item C?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar minus Item C.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, and in a second, I'll call the vote by roll call. Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes. So, let's go to Item C. I'll turn it over to Karen.
Yeah, thank you. So, many of you received correspondence in regards to, there were three potential formula restaurants that had come in as inquiry or to put in permits during the rulemaking process where we were changing the text of this ordinance. One of them, after your direction at your last meeting, that basically provided a 45-day period, the two weeks between the last meeting and this meeting, and then the 30 days that will start tomorrow until the ordinance, the new ordinance effectively is in place. And the discussion at that meeting was that any of those applicants that had come in during rulemaking that could make a complete building permit application could continue their way then through the process if they made it within that period. One of those applicants does not believe they can make a full building permit application. Staff reviewed their needs for make a full building permit application. Staff reviewed their needs for, you know, for permits, and just wanted to clarify with the council, the first step, because there are two, as you probably recall, that are just tenant improvements. There's already constructed facilities on site. There was one that will be fresh construction from ground level up. It's the one of the fresh construction from ground level up in the Valley West area that has requested additional time. I think within the spirit of the council's conversation, their first step would be a planning permit. It would not be the building permit at their first stage. So again, this is not part of your ordinance adoption tonight, but we did want to make sure that the council would be comfortable if staff accepted the complete planning permit application as their first step to make it sort of in that door to provide additional time to finish building permitting, construction, moving out from there within the window of that next 30 days from now. So I think that is the issue. We do have, it looks like several people that may want to make public comment as well on that, but I think that is the core of the issue. And if that is the will of the council, then I think that, you know, that issue is resolved for that applicant. They still need to hustle. They'll still need to get in their design review permit. They'll have to have, you know, designs, you know, just at some level ready to go, and they'll have to have that complete application in. So they'll still have that step that we would hold them to. But we do believe they could make that deadline if they hustled and pulled it together, so.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we just open up to public comment first and then bring it back to the council for any further discussion?
Any public comment on this item, please raise your hand. Okay. We do have public comment. Larry, go ahead, please. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you for your time, council, and thank you, Karen.
You're really low.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's just very faint.
It is?
Yes.
I will do my best. Is that any better?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I, all those, one of the team members of the company may participate in the meeting. I will provide you some info received. Her name is Kelly. If she does respond tonight, and/or if you have any questions, you may address them to her. I would tell you that I'd like to mention that the business that we're working with would anticipate serving about 300 or more customers per day at the Arcata location that is proposed. As of 2021, there are more than 70 shops open in California, and these shops support 2,700-plus jobs. The Arcata location alone will provide 30 to 35 new jobs for the community. They, the company also takes enormous pride in investing and giving back to the communities where they operate. Through their foundation, the company donates several million dollars to its local communities and nonprofit organizations each year. In addition, they have three company-wide givebacks. One is called Love, one is Drink One, and one is for Dane and for Buck and Kids. The local shops hold givebacks, donating 1% of monthly sales to support nonprofit organizations within their specific areas. As well, I wanted to mention to you that it's pretty well-known in the public that Humboldt State is going to become a polytech and looking to double the enrollment size within the next three to five years, which provides strong growth, and the students enrolling in Humboldt need jobs. This formula restaurant provides jobs just as a formula-based retailer like Tractor Supply does. Tractor Supply has provided a choice for Arcade.
Thank you. Your two minutes are done. Thank you, and feel free to, if you need to follow up in writing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Is there any more public comment for this item? We do have another public comment. Kelly, if you could go ahead, please.
Yes, hello. This is Kelly Sparkman, and I'm speaking on behalf of the prospective user of this property that we're speaking of. So I think what Larry stated is exactly basically what I wanted to say, but I will add a little bit on to that. So, you know, we are a privately held company, so I'm not able to provide forecasted sales or anything of that manner that you can relate to tax revenue. But I will say, with the customer served daily, we will definitely be providing sustainable revenue for the city, and that applies even during pandemic times, which is, which we've been going through in the last year and a half, as everybody knows. One thing to add on to what Larry had stated is, in the state of California, we are contributing $119 million to California's economy annually, and that's via compensation, taxes, and charitable giving. As Larry also mentioned, basically, giving back to the community is extremely important to our company. The amazing people that operate our shops, who do live locally, as he stated, give 1% of their sales to local charities, and that's in addition to the multiple giveback days that Larry mentioned. So truly, our goal is to become a part of the community in which we serve, and we just look forward to doing that in the City of Arcata. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other public comment for this item? Emily, please go ahead. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you. This is a suggestion for the speaker that just spoke. The giving of 1% to local charities is great, but another great thing that you could do is give 1% to the local tribe that, of which you occupy the land of. This is called an honor tax. So please look into this. As a business, it would bring positive feedback.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? No more public comment, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. Let's see, any initial thoughts? Councilmember Goldstein, or comments or questions?
Um, you know, I hate when I have to go first.
I did it again, but sorry.
I know. I'm like thinking, um, yeah, I mean, I think that we've kind of talked about that we can't make a decision based on an individual business for good or bad. And so while it's great that the speakers presented that they give back to the community and all of those great things, we can't actually make it. It's either it is or not. It could be a business that doesn't give anything to the community, and we couldn't really make a different decision in terms of, as far as I'm concerned, of what like the law says we can make our decision off of. So I appreciate you all that called in. But I think our decision just kind of has to be based off of what we feel is most true to our discussion last time. So that would just be my only thought, is that that's kind of where we're left with.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Um, yeah, so I mean, I guess just to give kind of authority over this conversation that we had and kind of conversations that I've had with our city manager and just after reading a lot of the comment that has come in from these folks that are concerned about this item. It sounds pretty doable that this planning permit could be accepted and could be completed within 45 days. And I think that does sound completely fair in this situation, because this process has already begun for this business, and they have, you know, begun looking at the space and creating, you know, something that is going to go here. I think I would feel very comfortable with accepting this planning permit as, you know, that first step for this business coming in. But I do feel that we should, you know, per our last discussion, stick to that 45 days, like we spoke about, with, you know, applying to the other restaurants as well. So I guess just to, you know, provide my opinion here, I think that it is, you know, I think it would be fine to accept that planning permit and that first initial step of, yeah, we have come in, we have put our name in the ring, we are planning on creating this business. Though I know it is a little bit more of a process for these folks, because, you know, it is out of the area that they have to bring in architects, et cetera, to get more detailed plans. But their plan has been, you know, placed before us and has been, you know, in discussion with our community development department and with our city. And so I think accepting that planning permit, like city manager Deemer said, and then all, within this 45 days, would be what I would feel comfortable with.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor Watson?
Um, I just want to make sure this is all really clear to the council. I don't want, you know, something to happen, and then everyone's like, how did that happen, I guess? So it's just the difference between a permit and an application and whether or not this would affect the cap. So those would be my questions.
Okay, so let me clarify. We have the cap in the ordinance, which you do still need to adopt tonight, so we don't want to forget that step. But we'll still cap at nine. With the result of the applicants that had come in to either speak to the council or staff during this rulemaking process, we would, if all three of them met a complete application for their first-stage permit, within, it's really, we're down to 30 days, right? Because it'll be 30 days from tomorrow. If all three of those, and to be honest, the Domino's Pizza applicant has already met, or the, one of them has already met a complete building permit application. So, but if the other two both met their complete applications, then we could, for a period, if they both continued through construction, we could have 10 for a period of time. Your ordinance, as you've chosen to word it and adopt tonight, would still leave that cap at nine. So when we lost a particular restaurant, we would hold then at that cap of nine. Does that answer everything? Vice Mayor Watson?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just hearing different, like, you know, I'm hearing permit, and then councilmember Schaefer, I mean, you know, councilmember Schaefer referred to it as a permit a couple times, and then I'm also hearing application. So it's an application for a permit, and it's not the permit.
Absolutely. It's an application for a permit. It's a complete application, either for a building permit or for a planning permit, that in essence shows the due diligence during this rulemaking period that you've come in as an applicant. Go ahead, councilmember Schaefer.
Well, and I'm kind of just remembering of a previous conversation that I had, that the application for the planning permit is probably an easier goal to reach for this particular business than an application for a building permit, correct? And that's why we're talking about, you know, this option of the first hurdle to reach as opposed to, you know, having a completed application for everything.
Right, for an applicant.
Make sure I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, for an applicant who doesn't already have a pre-existing structure. The other two businesses are proposing to be located in pre-existing structures that are already built. So for them, it would be a building permit application for what we call tenant improvements. It would be that complete application, because that would be their only next step. Go ahead.
Go ahead, councilmember Goldstein.
So then I guess my question would be, does this open us up to any problems going forward? Because we are making an exception for one out of the three businesses, either with the other two businesses currently, or if a similar issue arose in the future, is making an exception going to create problems for us?
Shall I step in, Karen?
Sure, if you'd like to.
I think the exception needs to be stated in the abstract so that anybody who comes in during the next 30 days that has a complete permit, whether it's a planning permit or a building permit, would be grandfathered in. And I think what Karen has given you is an overview of what staff views as the practical reality and the numbers that are out there that are ready to have the permit come in. And so you're making an exception, not necessarily just for these, but for anything that comes in complete in the next 30 days.
So again, I'm hearing a difference between permit and application. So Nancy's saying permit.
Complete permit application.
Okay, okay. No, that's okay.
I'm glad you caught that. A complete permit application.
All right, I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing. Thank you.
Okay, I do, however, want to clarify that when we reviewed sort of where things stand, there are, I can't identify another location where we have an opening in our current ordinance that would allow for yet another application for a permit to come in. So I don't think you're opening a wide window here. I think that we're done at this point with even accessible slots for permit applications to come in. Since, I mean, I guess I can say, since the one completed one we have has taken the one position that's still in North Town, right? So that would have been kind of sort of the one open slot. But that is, now has a complete application in that we'll go through first. So anything else would come in, if something else came in, in, say, North Town, then that would be in line after that, but would not be processed. That probably just added confusion.
I think following, basically, that with the current number of business formula restaurants that we already have and the applicants that could potentially have a complete permit application, that there wouldn't be any beyond, there wouldn't be any more room to fill a vacancy, a vacant spot in terms of the current rules that we have. And, well, first off, is there any, I guess I'll just add my thought. I think it's also helpful to note that when we talk about a formula restaurant ordinance, this is creating, you know, design standards. So a formula restaurant could open up, with, let's say there's a Starbucks, and they wanted to open up a restaurant, or, excuse me, you know, coffee shop in Arcata, and they chose to not follow their formula restaurant practices of the standard menu, the standard uniform, the standard logo, they could open up in Arcata. The point of the ordinance is to say, we want to cap the number of formula restaurants that are that cookie cutter, but that doesn't preclude a business from coming in and creating a unique destination in our community. So I feel it's important to just note that for those that may not fit into the number of openings that we have, that technically, if you want to provide a different menu and a different uniform and create something unique in Arcata, you can do that. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, or do we need to give some clear direction to staff here?
So it sounds like the question to me is, is a permit, is it okay that the permit gets turned in within the timeframe? And I'm fine with that.
You mean application?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
For a permit, correct? Like that, so that's why we're using these interchangeably, right? It's an application for a permit.
Yeah.
Great. It's not a permit.
It's not a permit, but it's an application for.
And if you do nothing, then there's just 30 days of scramble to see who has permits and who doesn't at the date the ordinance goes into effect. And those who have permits are in before the ordinance went into effect, and those who don't are out. So you're really, you're really discussing whether you want to create an exception around this completed application.
Okay, and I think that you did address, I mean, you did set that standard at your last meeting for the completed application. It's just whether or not both the building and/or a planning would count for that, I think is the question tonight. And then let's not forget to adopt the ordinance.
Okay, well, are there any objections to that recommendation by staff, that clarification?
Can we clarify that clarification real quick?
Yeah, just that, you know, for those three businesses that have come forward Yeah, just that, you know, for those three businesses that have come forward in the rulemaking process, they need to get a completed. Application for either a building or a planning permit to be, um. To be considered. In essence, grandfathered in to move through the process, doesn't guarantee them opening, but it guarantees them, you know, to go through our process. They've done their part in essence. To get into the process in time. And that will be thirty days from tomorrow.
Then that leaves it open to where anybody that can turn it up, like a fourth or fifth applicant could also turn in applications, right? And they'd be guaranteed.
Um, I. Not based on, because we have a completed application. Uh, in for the one North Town opening, I just don't see, uh, we don't have another opening. That slots for that, so I don't think that you've got. I don't think that you're opening up for a fourth and a fifth on a practical level. Right?
Yes, it, it would be possible, but you, it's highly unlikely and not probable, basically. If somebody scrambled together and decided, okay, we're gonna build a, you know, whatever the KFC and, you know, whatever it could be, uh. But that's highly unlikely in this situation with only a, a small window, correct?
Yeah, and it's, and it's the way the count goes that I think already precludes. The majority of that. You know, based on our current ordinance that's in place right now. You know, that then strengthens in thirty days when the new ordinance comes into place. You know, I would say, for example, if we did not have a spot pending in North Town. Right now that had a complete application in, that I would say another business in North Town could come in. But right now we have a completed application in that will go through that process. So if another one came in for North Town, they would not be processed at this point until that one went through. Right? Um, based on our current ordinance that's in place right now today. So I think that's where we've sort of closed the window at this point. Okay. Well, why don't we do the easy part, let's, can we just approve? Item C and then if we need to have any further discussion about. The, the guidance, we can at least take that off. Our to do list. So do you have a motion for item?
Yes. Well, sorry, I was gonna say yes, I, I moved that we adopt ordinance number fifteen forty six, an ordinance of the City Council. Of Arcata amending zoning regulations pertaining to formula restaurants, waiving of the tax. And country by title only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'll call the vote by roll, uh, Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, motion passes. And then any further discussion, um, about staff's recommendation for this. Thirty day period that starts tomorrow. Do we have consensus that that is the direction we want staff to go in?
I agree with staff's recommendation.
Okay.
To allow the, the planning. Application permit. Application for planning permit for said business in Valley West.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. Do we need a motion or are we good?
No, you don't need a motion. Yeah, you didn't do this by. It's just making sure we've got direction, yeah. Okay, so yes, I think we have a consensus for you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, let's move on to new business, uh, appoint one new member to the Energy Committee for a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. Do, uh, we have any recommendation? Or, excuse me, a motion to recommend appointment, um, a member to the Energy Committee?
I'll make a motion. Um, I move to appoint Karice Geronimo to the Energy Committee. Second.
And then add the term.
Oh, sorry, thank you, um, as ending a term expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty three. A second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, uh, do we have any members of the, members of the public wanting to comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you, and I'll call the vote by roll call, Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion passes and congratulations, Karice, and thank you again to our other fantastic applicants, um, definitely encourage folks. Uh, to, to apply if other opportunities come up, so thank you, everyone. Uh, okay, uh, next we have item B, Public Hearing to Consider Adoption of Resolution Number Two Zero One Dash Five Nine. Adopting the City of Arcata Twenty Twenty Updated Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. May we have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Sinkhorn?
Yes, thank you and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. And so the city's Twenty Twenty Urban Water Management Plan has been developed to document our water supplies, demands. And conservation efforts, so this is really intended to be a long-term planning tool to ensure water supply reliability. For our over twenty thousand customers here in Arcata and also. The Jacoby Creek Water District, um, and in particular for periods of drought or water shortage. And so the plan is updated and adopted every five years in accordance with California Water Code. And the Water Conservation Act of two thousand nine set a statewide goal of reducing. Urban water use by twenty percent by twenty twenty. So baselines were established and interim targets set within the last two urban water management plans and updated within this twenty twenty plan. So target water use for twenty twenty was determined at a hundred and thirteen gallons per capita per day. And the actual daily water use in our service area is eighty four gallons. Per capita per day, so well below the target. New for twenty twenty is a requirement to adopt the Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And this really provides the city with a structured action plan for dealing with drought or catastrophic water supply shortage. So updates to our wholesaler, wholesale supplier, Humboldt Babinesville Water District, updates to their water shortage contingency plan have been. Reflected in the city's plan. Um, and so this includes six water shortage levels and corresponding response actions should we need to utilize them. Um, and these water shortage contingency, uh, plan shortage levels are really triggered by storage at Ruth Lake. Um, and currently Ruth Lake is nearly at full capacity as our region is. One of the few geographic areas in the state with a local abundance of water. So that's a summary, um, and unless the council has questions at this time. I recommend, um, to conduct a public hearing on the Twenty Twenty Urban Water Management Plan and Water Shortage Contingency Plan. And then consider adoption of Resolution Number Two Zero One Fifty Nine approving both plans.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, I'll ask for questions from the council, starting with Vice Mayor Watson.
Um, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Goldstein.
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
No questions, thank you, Director Sinkhorn.
And I don't have any questions as well, uh, so let's see if there's any members of the public wishing to comment on this item.
For members of the public that would like to comment on this item, a reminder, if you're logged on to this, um, to Zoom, click on Raise Your Hand. On the right hand side of your screen, and if you've called in via phone, press star nine. When it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak, you will have two minutes to speak. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item? No public comment for this item.
Okay, thank you, uh, let's see, uh, do we have a motion?
You know, I just noticed, I didn't see anything about this in my packet, is this in the packet?
It is right at the end, so it's pages one twenty one. Through one twenty five, do you have that?
I see, mine just got separated, okay, thank you.
It's just short, right? That's, yeah, there's not, okay. I was like, am I looking at the right thing too? I was like, it's right here.
I'll make a motion, so wait, we don't, do we need to continue the public hearing or no?
No.
All right, to adopt Resolution Number Two Zero One Dash Five Nine approving the two thousand twenty Urban Water Management Plan.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I'll call the vote by roll call, Vice Mayor Watson.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein. Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, motion passes, thank you, Director Sinkhorn. Okay, and next we are at oral and written communications, this time is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. Please raise your hand if you are on the Zoom webinar or press star nine now if you are on the phone line and you would like to make a public comment. Speakers are limited to two minutes, when it is your time for public comment, the clerk will unmute you and invite you to speak. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment?
Giving a moment to check for any public comments. And seeing none.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next we will move on to council and staff reports, are there any staff updates? Yeah, thank you, I, I do want to do a quick update because we've been getting a lot of calls and questions from the media and the community first and saying congratulations to our mayor, Sofia Pereira. Um, who is heading to lead the Public Health, uh, Department, Division of Department of Health and Human Services at the county. And what that means for the position and the vacancy, so I just wanted to share with, um, the community, because I think all of the council knows this at this point. Uh, sort of what that process looks like and then at the point that you will be discussing this as a council, so. When a vacancy occurs, the council basically has two options and really kind of a sixty day timeline to decide on how to act. The council may either appoint a successor or to call a special election to fill the vacancy. So given the timeframe, we have just kind of counted through the numbers and there is a lot of numbers associated with the code that I will not go into tonight. Um, but option one. Would be, um, within sixty days from the vacancy, uh, if the council wished to appoint a successor. Uh, the council would seek a process and we would go through an appointment process. Uh, which would be up for the council, usually begins with a call for applications to begin the appointment process and then we go through an interview. At least one night of interviews, uh, and then we go through an appointing process, so given that, uh, this position will become vacant on June twenty fifth. Uh, the option would require an appointment to be made on or before August twenty third. And then, uh, given the fact that, uh, Mayor Pereira is leaving in the second half of, uh, of this position. Then that can, that, uh, appointed council member would fill that position until. The election of the position, which would be November of twenty twenty two. Uh, option two is that the council within, technically you have sixty days, uh, to call a special election in the case here. Uh, given the next regular election is November second. And we do need a hundred and fourteen days prior to that to call the election. And then given the County Board of Supervisors summer schedule, uh, we would need to let the county know by June twenty fifth. Whether or not we want them to consolidate and have a special election on that November second ballot. Uh, and, um, so those are really just the two basic options that'll be before you. Uh, and we will add an agenda item to talk about these on June twenty fourth, so that you do have all the range of options in front of you to make that decision. Uh, on that night, so I just wanted to share that and congratulate our mayor. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, uh, Councilmember Goldstein, any updates?
Uh, no, just want to say congratulations to you and that we're going to miss you a lot, I'm gonna miss you a lot. And I'm, I'm probably equally sad for, for us and for myself and happy for you, so congratulations, it's a, it's a great decision.
Thank you, Councilmember Goldstein. I'll see, uh, Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, per usual, what Councilmember Goldstein said, um, just to reiterate that congratulations, Mayor, um, but nothing, uh, to report other than that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Watson.
I have a question, um, about the staff report, so. If the council decided on June twenty fourth that they wanted to hold an election, the staff would have enough time?
Uh, we will, we'll have everything prepared sort of either way, I mean, I'll, you just need to pass one resolution that asks the county board for consolidated election, so. We have a template of that, that'll be in your packet, uh, that night on the twenty fourth. And then we'll just have an outline of what a timeline would look like if you wanted to go through an appointment process, so yeah, you should have all that.
Okay, so the twenty fourth is our budget meeting, right?
It is.
So are we gonna call a special, another special meeting? To talk about this?
Okay, right now the intent was to do it all in that night.
Sure, I know, but I'm saying that night, don't we technically have to call a special meeting to talk about it?
Um, you have a special meeting now, it'll be one special meeting and part of that, um, will be review of the budget. Part of that will be this agenda item and then you've got a study session with the Planning Commission on.
I see, so the agenda's not out yet, so we have time to put it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, that makes sense, cool.
But thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, cool, yeah, definitely, big congratulations to Sophia, it's been a pleasure working with you the last few years and I'll definitely miss you. So hopefully see you around.
Thank you, yeah, I'll still be around, just different roles, so, uh, I'm, I'm sure we'll still get to work together in some capacity, everyone, so thank you. Um. Gosh, um, just in terms of business reports, uh, Humboldt Waste Management Authority, um. They are still going through the Executive Director recruitment process, so. I don't have any update to. To share on, on that front, um, so. Um, trying to think if there was anything else. Noteworthy, we passed another balanced budget, so that's always good, um. Okay, um, and gosh, I, I feel like I said everything I needed to say, um, in my letter to the community, um, I know we have a jam packed, uh. Agenda next Thursday, so it feels kind of weird to be like, oh, this is my last meeting, but it's the last regularly scheduled council meeting. Um, so I just really, you know, grateful for this opportunity to serve in this role. Um, and, uh, you know, it does, that doesn't feel real yet, so just. Serving on this council for over six years has just been an incredible honor. The things that we've gotten to work on, things that I've learned from every single person that I've interacted with here on this council. Um. So yeah, I'll just, I'll leave it at that, I'm not going anywhere, it's a different role, um, so. Uh, let's move on to dates of future meetings. A special meeting to hold a study session with the Planning Commission and discuss and adopt the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two annual budget. Plus this other item that you, well, you'll have before you, uh, that we've already discussed, uh, Thursday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty one at five thirty via teleconference. Uh, and now, uh, we are going into a closed session portion of this meeting, so thank you, everyone, and have a good rest of your evening.